Uh, let's see here. Dean, since you're standing, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
And then stay standing for the invocation.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you.
Let's pray together. Father God Almighty, we remember this day, a terrible event that occurred against our nation. And as terrible as it was, we also see in that event how people served, heroically served, even giving their lives. And we see in that the blessing of community. And we thank you this night for this community and for the firefighters and police officers of this community and the leaders of this community and all the people of it. And we pray, Father, that you would bless the leaders and firefighters and police officers. We pray that you give wisdom to this very meeting tonight. May wise decisions be made to continue to help this community be strong and healthy. And we pray this in the name of Jesus unto your glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Row call, please.
Councilmember Dean Uker.
Here.
Danielle Graff.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Mayor Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Mike Ristoucha.
Present.
Okay, this is time for public discussion. Anybody in the audience that has something they'd like to bring up that is not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, we'll get to it at the time. Seeing nobody, we will now move to the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of August 14th and August 21st, if we can do them all at one time.
So first.
Okay, hold on. We have a motion.
We don't have a thing that's...
Well, I'm trying to figure out. Okay, here we go. Okay. Thank you. Because Jake called it and moved slow. Now is the approval of the agenda as posted or amended?
This is when I do... Okay, I'm gonna pull four. Mrs. Raymond can tell you what they are.
Yes.
1.2E, 1.2K, and 1.4E and F.
And I'm pulling 1.4A. Okay, so with that, do we have approval of the agenda as amended?
So first.
We have a motion.
You gotta click.
A second. Everybody's voted. Do we have approval of the consent calendar as amended?
So first.
Okay.
Come on, Jake.
I got you.
All right.
Okay. So now let's go to 1.2E.
Okay. This is design services for which part of River Road? Is this the, what is it, north side that's gonna be widened between east of Fulton?
Yes, between Fulton Avenue and the cornerstone development.
Okay. What landscaping are we talking about?
I believe it is the landscaping in the median.
Yes, it's the median and then on the north side, the Parkway on the north side.
Oh, okay. Do we know it? That's supposed to happen when? Next year?
Yeah, the project, actually, James just told me we just got authorization from Caltrans to proceed with bidding the project. So I think here in the next couple of weeks, it should be out to bid.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Requesting bids.
Are we gonna do all these at once at the end?
We can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're not gonna do 1.4 at the end. We'll do these and then we'll go to 1.4.
Okay.
Go 1.2K.
My question about this one is... There's still that corner at the high school that's not done. Is it gonna get done?
Yeah, they actually plan on being back onsite on Monday.
It's coming Monday? Okay. And how long do they think it'll take?
It should take about two weeks to complete the concrete and then probably a week or two after that to finish the landscaping.
Okay. I get asked that a lot by people at the high school.
Yeah, we were delayed because of PG&E and, you know, they're...
Right, no, I got it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
So let's go to 1.4E.
I'm gonna skip you?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my only question is, now that it's done and we drive up there and these flashing red lights are going on, how long is that gonna last?
The plan is to continue that until that next phase of River Road is done. Once that next session, section is done, then they'll put the signal on the correct program.
So as soon as it's three lanes going in and coming out, then it's...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, 1.4F.
And the last... Why is that parcel being subdivided?
They just are subdividing that to market it a little bit better. They're not doing any development on it this time. It's something the owners wish to do on that.
But it's still zoned commercial, right?
Still zoned commercial.
Okay.
Not changing zoning.
Thank you.
1.4F.
That was it.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve 1.2E, 1.2K, 1.4E, and 1.4F.
Second.
Okay, second, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, the only reason I pulled 1.4A is because I sit on the San Joaquin Regional Transit District and I don't wanna be part of approving a contract to pay them. That's it. Only reason I'm pulling it.
Okay. Put it up there. I'll move that we approve the contract.
And I will abstain. Okay. So with that, we are done with the consent calendar. Are you from the school? Perfect. We have a proclamation for you. You bet.
So if you'd like to come up here, please? Sir? First of all, let me think.
No, go to the middle. Go to the middle. I'm doing what I'm told. I've been married a lot, a lot of years, I do what I'm told. So first of all, let me just say that I, you know, I read this and I have looked into it and I just really appreciate what you're doing. I think that it's such a valuable tool that I think peer assistance in many things is good, especially when it comes to suicide. We all know people that have either considered it or have done it and it's just a, it's a terrible thing to even think about. So thank you so much. Are you too involved as well into this? Okay, well, thank you very much as well and thank all of your, all of your team. So we have a proclamation here. I don't wanna read it all, but basically what we're doing is we're recognizing suicide prevention week for September 24th through 28th, correct? And so we'd like to present this proclamation to you, whereas the Ripon High Peer Assistance Group of 2018, 2019 are helping bring awareness. So thank you for doing that, all that you do. We do appreciate it as the city council and the city. I think you're doing a wonderful thing. If you'd like to say a few words?
Well, briefly, what we're doing is, right now, about eighty percent of suicide is the responsibility or has its root in mental health issues. So the students have been looking at mental health issues and that's the direction that we're going this week is looking at that and making the kids, other kids and our staff aware and what to look for and how we can be of assistance to those people and make them feel like they belong. So we've come up with some sayings that we've researched and we're doing all sorts of activities. Every day, we're doing something. On our late start morning, we're having hot chocolate for the people that are there early and I've let my class develop skills. So I'm teaching leadership through this peer assistance class and watching them work together as teams and helping each other, each of the teams out. It's an exciting thing to do. I'm enjoying it. This was my request to teach this class and I'm really glad that I did.
Well, thank you. That's very kind of you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you very much. Okay. 2A, the resolution appr- opposes Prop 6, which is on the November 6th, 2018 ballot and permits the city room to be listed as a member of the No on Prop 6 Coalition of approved. Prop 6 would repeal the gas and diesel tax, increases along vehicle fees, increases that were enacted in 2017 and require voter approval for future fuel tax and vehicle fee increases.
I'm the person that asked if this be on the agenda, that it be considered. And I realize that asking some councilmen in some places or situations where taxes are the issue makes it difficult for people. But in this case, while I understand that people are upset about the way that the tax increase was put in place, this community stands to lose a lot if SB 1 is repealed. As it says in the resolution, we, it doesn't say, give the amount, but we get about three quarters of a million dol- isn't that right, Kevin? Total to work on roads. And when you consider that it takes a million dollars to redo a mile of road, that's not a whole lot of money. And twenty percent of that money is coming from SB 1. And that, coupled with the fact that there is now a move afoot to cut another thirty percent of our money, which is the local transportation fee money, because that is supposed to go first to transit projects and then if you don't have transit, you can use it for roads. But with all the improvements that are being made in rail and other kinds of transportation, there is a strong move to begin to move all of that money to transit, even from communities like Ripon and Escalon. And so we stand to lose probably over the next, I'm guessing, three to five years. A, if SB 1 is repealed, twenty percent of the money. And if LTF money goes away, another thirty to forty percent of the money. And so we're gonna be looking at, being able to use maybe forty percent of the money we get now to try to do the same job that's getting worse every year. And for that re- and there's a lot of stuff. This is one of those places where a tax increase that nobody liked is actually doing the things that the tax increase was supposed to do. And whereas politically it might be a good idea, practically, it's gonna put us in a bind and a lot of towns like us if that money goes away. It's fifty billion a year for the life of that, for the state. That's a, that's a, that's a lot of money. So I put this on here for discussion and it's up to the council to decide what they wanna do with it.
Well, I'd like to make some comments and I appreciate you putting it on because it's really, it's an important issue. But, but I'm gonna vote no and here's the reason why. You know, our state legislature's been so irresponsible with the way they handle money. You know, they keep stealing from all of us because they lack financial discipline. You know, they keep raising taxes and forget about cutting expenses. You know, they keep taking from one buck and doing others. So they, they funded Cal or PERS with six billion dollars from the general fund and then they're trying to raise taxes on the other end. The, the, the increase is about a hundred and seventy-five dollars in license fees. It's about seven hundred dollars a year in gas taxes for the average family. I mean, that's sixty dollars a month, seventy dollars a month. That doesn't affect some of us, but that's a lot of money for somebody that drives twenty-five thousand miles a year and gets paid twenty-five bucks an hour. You know, we're gonna pay up to ninety-five cents per gallon. The governor himself goes around bragging about how he's got a six billion dollar budget surplus and then he's got another nine billion dollar surplus this year and we're already one point three billion dollars in debt. And they don't have any financial discipline. You know, I kinda looked at it and I've been looking at this a long time, not just because it's coming on our agenda, but you know, I looked at it and I thought, okay, so if I needed a new roof, I just don't go to my clients, say, we're raising your fees because we need a new roof. They're gonna go, well, don't have a second home, don't drive the nice car, don't buy the suits and the stakes and everything else. Cut your expenses. And I just can't have, I just can't in my heart of hearts, and I know we probably need the money, but if we keep just letting them raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes, they're never gonna get any financial discipline in place. And I, because of that and a budget that's out of whack, a state that's broke, one point three trillion dollars in unfunded and funded liabilities, I just can't in my heart of heart do that to not only our residents, but the people of the state of California. So I appreciate you bringing it up. It's an important issue, but I can't support it. Or I can't support, I can support repealing it, I guess, is what it is.
Well, if I might add, I think I tend to agree with Mike on this one, too. The state has again and again and again been completely irresponsible with the money we've already given them. And to, because this one might be the good one or a better, better tax, it doesn't make it right that they've done what they've done on the previous, previous ones and they have a hard time going along with just another one because this one might be better when they've shown in the past that they have, you know, not taken into consideration the taxes that they've put on and the burden that they've put on the people. In the resolution here, the second page, page 2A, so the voters overwhelmingly passed Prop 69 in June, thereby ensuring transportation funds can only be used for transportation purposes and the state and local governments are accountable to taxpayers. And I would argue that the voters pass that because the state has been so irresponsible with their funds in the past. And I'm, Mike makes good points, is, you know, they can, the state can do a better job with the money that they have and if they think we can do, there's better ways to do it than continuing taxing the, you know, people over California to pay for this the way they have. And I would argue seems this is a controversial issue. It's better that we vote no on this proposition today, resolution today and let the people decide and not let them vote November and decide on it. I don't think, if we can't come to a five oh consensus on a resolution like this, that's probably, I, I wouldn't say that we should be supporting it. So I would encourage you to vote no on it as well and that's all I have to say.
Now Jake, you're actually up.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. When I look at this issue, the dynamics from when we originally commented on it really haven't changed and, and I, I think Leo is right in the sense that, you know, when we look at what the future holds for transportation funding in this city, a lot of it is controlled by the state and they control a lot of the purse strings and a lot of it is outside of our scope. So we have to kind of come up with solutions in order to address this issue because this is one of the core basic functions of government, to make sure our roads and our streets are safe, are stable, don't have potholes, you know, and are aesthetically pleasing. And I think I'm in agreement with both the mayor and councilman Graff in that it's not necessarily opposed to finding some source of funding, it's opposed to the entity that is controlling the funding and their lack of, and their historical just malfeasance when it has come to finances and it really does put us in a bind of, yes, this money is helping, however, the source that it's coming from and continually being able to trust that that money is going to be there in the future and that things aren't going to change, that it's not going to be a dynamic situation. Yes, I know that it's, they've come out and said that they're not going to do anything with it, that they're not going to touch it. However, you know, Supreme Court justices stare at this all the time when they're in front of the Senate Judiciary, yet they somehow find a way to, when they're on the Supreme Court, to have a change of mind. So I feel like the, and not feel, I mean, the state of California has shown that they've, that they have this historical tendency to, to be able to mismanage things and to be able to, yes, one year it's allocated for a certain thing, but that they all of a sudden find a way to reallocate it. And that is my main concern. With this, though, I do think that we need to look at other options for, if we're not going to support this, how, what are our transportation funding sources going to be in the future? Because I think Leo is right in the sense that, you know, in the not-too-distant future, we are going to have transportation shortfall. So how are we going to come up with those revenues? What are we going to do? So I, I think it's a, it's a problem that needs to be looked at.
Do you have anything, Dean?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, well, I tell you, I, as much as I wanna support it because it's needed, I just, they haven't proven to me they can spend our money right. I gotta be honest with you. That's, that's, that's it. That's only, I'm glad you brought it up because it's important. There's no doubt about it.
Oh, it is.
I guess the only thing I would say is that there's a part of me that thinks that some people, it's one of those cut off your nose to spite your face type things. People don't like the way it was done. Mainly conservatives because this is a liberal state. I understand that. But it is an important source to address a problem that we have. And I don't really care how long you sit here. I don't really care how long you talk about it. You're not gonna be able to solve that problem by yourself. You're going to need state and federal help. And if you keep sending it back, it's not gonna get any, the situation that it's designed to address isn't getting any better. I remember when we had the discussions when SB 1 was being talked about and I was at COG meetings and I was at Rail Commission meetings, I was lots of places and lots of people said, that's ridiculous, they shouldn't do it, blah, blah, blah. And there were some of us, and I'll, I've said it, we have a problem that's getting worse every year and at some point, sometimes you gotta swallow hard and take the solution and make it work. A year from now, we will have probably less than seventy-five percent of the money that we have now to work on streets and roads. And within five years, we will have less than fifty percent of the money. You're not gonna be able to replace that. It's gonna take state and federal people to do it. And if you don't like the way they did it and you keep sending it back, eventually you're not gonna get anywhere. You can send all the messages you want. The people that are gonna suffer as a result of that message are the people that you live next door to, not the guy in Sacramento.
I don't disagree. I just can't cave because somebody asked me to raise revenue rather than lots of expenses. I mean, they just haven't done a very good job and they can keep taxing and let's do it here because they fell for this and they fell for that and we'll do this and we'll just throw money out the door and put it in a rat hole because we'll just keep taxing people. I don't disagree that, what you're saying, Leo, at all. I disagree, not about how they did it, but how they financially manage. If we managed our city that way, we'd be broke. And you, you're very well financially disciplined. I know how you handle financing the city. You do a very good job. And I'd just like to see the state do as good a job as we do.
Well, and that's fine. You can send that message, but I'm, I'm just telling you, A, I'll be interested in how it's received and B, they're not gonna suffer for that. We are.
Well, if enough people yell and scream, maybe they'll find a way to fund this thing by cutting expenses and put, put, putting money in a rat.
Nope.
I'd say let, let the people in November decide how they wanna send the message.
Well, that's exactly how it works.
That's fine. I, that's fine.
I don't think there's probably anyone up here that disagrees with you, Leo. We, we understand the severity of it.
Well, we can go to a vote. I mean, the res- oppose proposition six. Somebody wants to make a motion and second, we can go to the vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution. You can't vote and there's no second.
I did second.
There was a second.
Yeah.
So it's here. All votes have been cast. Two yes, two yes, three nos. Okay. It's an important nation. I'm, I'm actually very glad you brought it up. Two, two, excuse me.
No, 3A.
Three, 3A. Ordinance amends title 16, chapter sixteen point two four, use table, table to allow for church uses in light industrial district upon approval of a use permit. This is the second reading and adoption.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, another second reading and adoption. The ordinance amends title 16, chapter sixteen point one two, definitions of use of classifications fifth and sixteen point one six residential districts table sixteen point sixteen point one and sixteen point eight six, second dwelling units in order to bring them into compliance with recent changes in state law. Second reading and adoption.
Second.
Gotcha.
Damn. Finally decided to get in the game.
We need to move to a voice activated system so that we check with our people and see if there is such a thing.
It's part of the mission. That should, that should make it work.
Like a series, series, a series or whatever it is. Okay, discussion items. Charter communication, charter communication represented to address internet reliability and Ripon and answer any questions the city council and the public may have. Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Great.
We're sorry, this is gonna be funny.
You wanna start out with anything or? If you, if you don't mind, please come up to the podium and state your name and we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Oh, it was a short trip from San Diego. Who's Trisha? She is amazing, by the way. She followed up and followed up and followed up. She's a tremendous asset.
Yeah.
I'll steal her and take her back to San Diego.
She, she scares, she scares us, too.
Forgive me. My name is Del Heinz. I'm the senior director of state government affairs for Charter Spectrum. I am, I live in Temecula, wine country in Southern California. My office, I have an office in San Diego, I have an office in Riverside, I have an office in Pasadena. I have a variety of directors reporting to me. The director that you've been working with, Kevin, is in British Columbia paddling a kayak up and down rivers and lakes and she's out of country, so she couldn't make it. I think today's questions, and if you don't mind, can I just kinda do a quick opening statement?
You bet.
First thing I wanna, I wanna say is, we're really sorry. What's happened here in your community is just not acceptable to us. It's obviously not acceptable to you and your constituents. But you know, I'm in the business of keeping my customers happy. And what happened to us here is an anomaly and I wanna explain to you how, what happened. Imagine that you got a brain center in the city of Sacramento. Coming down to ninety-nine, you have a fiber network run. Coming down to five, you have a fiber network run. You cross over on four as you head between Stockton and the ninety-nine and then you cross over here on Jackton Road. You build your networks with redundancy. Not only has there, is there a fiber redundancy network, there's equipment redundancy and there's power redundancy, backup power redundancy. We contracted with a company and I, I'll leave their name out of it, okay? If you don't mind, just
Sure.
We contracted with a company to provide fiber services for us to deliver signals and HSD, high-speed data, internet and phone service to your community. And when we did that contract three years ago, there was re- there was built-in redundancy qualifications and requirements in that contract. We did not do our job. We did not make sure that they actually built what we were paying for. And what has happened is, is that when they had an equipment failure, instead of the redundant network picking it up and you wouldn't even see it as a human being, and that it stopped where that equipment failed, it stopped where there was a fiber cut, it stopped where and that it stopped where that equipment failed, it stopped where there was a fiber cut, it stopped where a pole was knocked down by a, by a semi truck. And that redundant network coming down to the five which feeds your community didn't get activated because they didn't build it. My CEO, uh, and we're the second largest telecom company in the country, is in weekly conversations with the CEO of this company that is supposed to be building this network for us. And they know they have to build this. They are in the process of building it as we speak. We've already removed the equipment from the same location and put it in a second location, so we do have a, an equipment redundancy now. And we also have a backup battery-powered and diesel-powered generator which will run for a week. Uh, the thing that we don't have redundancy on currently is the fiber network itself. And it's going to take anywhere between twelve months and twenty-four months to build that network. We have secret review, we have EIR review, we have Caltrans issues. Uh, the thing that, you know, we need your help from to help us get to your community and Escalon and the surrounding communities that we just spent a lot of money at upgrading our networks in is, when we gotta come to your community, please help us with a escalated permitting process, working with the public works department. Help us get these permits approved on a, on a timely basis so we can come through and build this redundant network. So, you won't have to yell at me anymore. And I, I, and I deserve everything you wanna throw my way because we let you down. And, and we don't wanna do that again. That's why we're babysitting this thing every single day and every single way. Uh, that's what happened to us. How can I help you and how can I answer some questions for you? What can I, what can I do for you?
Let me just make some comments if I can to be, first of all, thanks for coming up. We really do appreciate it. And I'll tell you why. Because in a, in a town like this, when something like this goes out, everybody knows about it, and people are just fuming. When your system works, it's great. I, I, I use it, and it works great. But it's gone down so often, and it's not anymore, as you know. It's not just people looking at email and searching. People do business on this thing. You know, people make four or five hundred bucks an hour on the internet. Do, they're the business. You know, and every time it goes down, you cost people a thousand, two, three thousand dollars, you know, just being shut down. And that does create a problem. And, and, and it's not expected to go down as often as what it was. And the last time it went down like for eight hours. And it was just, I mean, it just wasn't acceptable, and we get the calls, and, and we're not beating you up, but we need to be able to follow up and find out what the issues are because we need to make sure our people get what they pay for. I mean, I pay ninety-four dollars a month, and I just got something in the mail that you, 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 you get a kick out of this. So, I get a thing in the mail says, you know, so I'm paying ninety-four dollars a month for, for, uh, internet and phone. I can get internet, phone, and TV for thirty bucks, so I can save sixty-four bucks. And I'm saying, "Well, I don't know. If it goes out, I still wanna be able to turn my TV on." You know, so it, it's one of those guys, and I'm not the only one.
You know, everything you're saying is just pure common sense. And that's why we contracted for redundancy, and we didn't do our job. We let these people get away with not providing what we were paying for. Shame on us. But it's not gonna happen again. The, the thing about network outages, you know, it's electronics. They do fail, especially in the heat of the summer. Uh, it cooks, it, it, heat is the killer of electronics. And when you get a hot heat segment, I live in the same kind of territory you do. It's, it's hot. It gets to over a hundred degrees religiously in my hometown. And it, it bakes our equipment, and those little outages happen. These long outages that you're talking about, eight, ten, twelve hours where this fiber network coming out of Turlock, and that's why they were, went down so long. And we, we just didn't do our due diligence. We didn't kick their tires hard enough. And, but we're kicking something now, but I can't say what that is.
So, you said twelve to twenty-four months, but does that, are you suggesting then or saying that we can expect some of the, some of the same kinda issues over the next twelve to twenty-four months till the redundancy's in place?
Well, there's three levels of redundancy. I just wanna repeat because, you know, I've been doing this for so many years. I just know it inside and out. I need to probably make it a little more definable. There's equipment that's redundant. A piece of electronics here that puts that fiber network, it's a laser fiber transmitter, puts it on the, on the fiber here. And there's supposed to be one over here. Well, what they did is use the same one, and they just fed it over here to this run, and when it failed, your, your, your network went down. And then when we had a power outage that lasted longer than the batteries could go up, the same thing here. They should've had a power supply and a generator here and one over here, but they only had one here. And when it failed, this went down, coming to your community. So, what we've done already is they fixed the two out of the three. The third one is the fiber. We have two options. Well, we have three. Most telecom companies in the country, even the big ones like AT&T and Verizon, no one has a ubiquitous fiber network that goes everywhere. We have, it's normal practice to, to lease dark or lit fiber from third-party providers. That's normal. And, and we, that's what we did here. So, we can either force them to fulfill the contract, or we take them to court, and then we own the company eventually. Okay, we don't wanna do that. Um, or we can build it ourselves, and we are absolutely doing the engineering right now to build it ourselves. And that's what I mean when I come to you. I might, might need some permitting permits to be pushed through quickly so we can help, you can help us to help yourselves. Uh, we're considering that very seriously. It's gonna take me about another month to finish the design. And then we gotta figure out where Caltrans is gonna give us issues. Caltrans is a, a blessing as well as a boon, okay? We just passed a state law. I have to do with the semi-members and Senators and Congressmen on a daily basis. Uh, we just passed a piece of legislation that the governor's gonna sign. Where Caltrans now is gonna have to put conduit on their overpasses and all the new construction so I can pull my fiber right through. And then I don't get held up for three or six or nine years to be able to get a redundant network to Rippen. So, we fixed two out of the three, sir. The third one, we're, we're looking, we're keeping on it. We have a, a thing called a NOC. It, it manages and looks at every piece of electric equipment twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And there, they have assigned a special group of people just to look at the fiber network coming to Rippen and Turlock and Woodlake and Escalon to make sure that we keep it up. We can see when it begins to fail before the consumer even sees the services go down. And then we can dispatch and find different routes to get around it. So, that's not, one option, build it ourselves, or go to another provider and go around it. Go way towards the west coast, or go way towards, towards the inland, towards the mountains, and come up with a new route. The problem we've got going into the mountains, like Angels Camp is an example where I currently have service in Angels Camp. I can't get advanced services there because I can't get through the forest service land to be able to attach my fiber to some poles. So, we're actually coming up with a couple of new technologies. We have a microwave technology that can deliver one gig that we're probably gonna deploy in, in Angels Camp. Uh, that doesn't help me with the fiber redundancy coming in different routes. So, we're gonna come west and see if we can find other providers to get us up real quick. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, again, I mean, the bottom line is I wish I could come in and take every sixteen thousand five hundred person in your community and say, "I'm sorry." Um, we are. If, if they want credits, all they have to do is call the toll fee number on the phone. What we do is, let's say that you called me and said, "My modem was down from midnight to six AM on Sunday." We can go into the database and see that your modem was down. We know when it's down, we know when it's up because we can ping it. So, that, we can't see anything else. We just can see that it's working. So, we'll be able to take, go in and say, "Of course, you, you were down from midnight to six AM. Here's a credit." So, all we have to do is have them call us.
Let me ask you a question. So, you know when it's down. You know you're putting the burden back on the person it's down on to spend the time that they didn't have that it can use. Have you talked about as a company saying, "Hey, we, we know when it's down. We're just gonna give everybody a credit because we know they were down." I mean, if you, if you're, if you're down in Rippen, everybody's down, so you know it.
Couple of things that really kinda make it complicated. Uh, we provide a modem at no charge to all of our internet customers, but most of the customers will go out and buy their own routers.
I see.
What we don't know is if it's the router or the modem.
But you know when your system's down.
We know when the network's down, like when those fiber cuts and the fiber, uh, poles were tucked down. We know they're, when they're down, yeah.
So, regardless if it's your modem or not, you know they're not getting service.
We know they're not getting services yet. Well, we, we thought they were, coming through the redundant route that wasn't working.
Right.
Okay.
But I'm just saying to take the burden off somebody, they have to ask for it. If you know that your service is down regardless of the modem, I think it'd be a nice gesture. I don't care about ten bucks, fifteen bucks, but some people might, may think it, hey, that's a pretty nice gesture. I didn't even have to call.
So, I think it's a very decent request. Can I take it back and kick it way up the ladder and come back to you?
Absolutely.
Well, I promise. Make that commitment.
Yes, thank you.
Also, remember.
I'd like to know who that eight hundred number is because I have Charter at my office, and I will tell you, when my computer was down that eight hours, it cost me a hell of a lot more than my ten-dollar service.
Why, my, me, too.
Because my business relies on it. I have an insurance company, and I, you know, we can't do our job. And, and I always ask my wife, who's really the boss, my name's on the wall, but she's the boss.
I've got one of those.
You all do.
And that's the first thing I always ask her. Well, are we getting credit for this? And she goes, she kinda just laughed at me when I said that. So, I mean, it's nice that you said that, but is it, she's called before and never gets nothing accomplished.
So, so two-part question, if I could. Is your account a business account or a residential account?
Both. I have business account and residential account.
So, the bill you get for your business account is a different call center. It's called Spectrum Enterprise Co- Customer Care. And then your residential goes to Spectrum Internet, uh, Spectrum Residential Care. By the way, you may even, you may know that we spent seventy-five billion dollars and bought Time Warner Cable here two years ago.
And it works.
Twenty-five thousand of their employees were in overseas call centers. Charter shut down all of our overseas call centers about five years ago. Years ago. My customers hate them. They have a script, and if your issue is off-script, they don't know how to help you. And, and even though it costs me twice as much to basically take a call in-country, we have added all those twenty thousand jobs back in country. And we average answering the phone ninety-seven percent of the time within thirty seconds. So, please do pick up the call, and it's gonna be a different, a number. I'm sorry. But if I, I have a kit for you. I'm gonna leave with your team. On the kit is my business card. If you would please, may I just let you see it? If you would please call my personal cellphone number on that card, give me your two addresses. I will personally take care of you.
Yeah, and you know, I think that's a big thing, but, you know, all corporate companies, which I happen to work for one, they, they are out. You, you can't even understand half those people. It's very frustrating. And I'm not trying to be prejudiced.
No, it's a, it's a language issue.
It, it, it is.
They can't understand him either, though.
Well, give, give you an example. We just opened up a six-hundred-seat call center in McLaren, Texas, and it's nothing but Spanish. Uh, we have a large Hispanic da, uh, customer base across the country, so it's the same issue. Uh, the language barrier. So, when they call the number, it goes right into that Spanish-language queue. So, we're doing things to manage the business better. Um, in the former world, the person who may be coming to your home was probably gonna be a contractor. He or she gets paid by the job. And the charter world, they're now all employees. The minimum wage we pay is forty thousand dollars a year for, for a technician. We train him or her for ninety days and put him on the street. They get to take their company vehicle to and from home. They have no commute cost, no gas cost, no insurance cost. And we pay thirteen thousand five hundred dollars a year for their medical, dental, and vision benefits. We're hiring people who care and people who have the tactic, technical capability to take care of you. It, it's taken us two years to get here. Uh, and are we perfect yet? Yet, no. But we have missions upon missions upon missions that we are hitting all those benchmarks to be able to take care of you. And we had that benchmark crossed off for the redundancy for the Central Valley, and we got taken to the cleaners.
On a positive note, I would like to say that I can remember back in the, you know, years, a few years back, where I've been with Charter for about, you know.
Thank you for your business, sir.
And, uh, but, I can remember when it rained, we had problems because everything was underground.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's, it's not like that no more, though. It seems like it, the rain doesn't, the rain doesn't faze anything.
Wait till wintertime.
Well, you know, the, the, the vault issue, and I'm very familiar with the vault issue here, and you've been, and we have another community in Southern California, Cerritos. And it's a, a, a flat vault system, too. A heck of a lot jar down there. The water table isn't as high as it is here, too. What's happened over the years, sir, is, is that the, uh, the equipment's been, uh, and the, how it's encased, let it breathe so it stays cool, and yet still keeps the water out has improved significantly. The other thing is, it's our NOC, Network Operations Center Monitoring, and we can see when the signal quality starts to drop on that piece of amplifier in that vault in front of your home. And before you even know it, there's a truck dispatch in the middle of the night to fix it. So, I think between process and just equipment improvements, we've been able to fix things here. Okay? I, I, I mean, it's a pride, a source of pride in your community, your, your flush mount vaults. And I absolutely understand why it is. Does it mean that we have to do a little more work and, and does it cause us issues? Yes. But if that's what you want, I'm in the business to keep you happy. Sir?
I have one question. Given what you've done, as you've described, can you quantify how much that has reduced the chance of what happened a few weeks ago happening again?
I would say it's probably sixty percent, seventy percent better because, remember, there are three different things that would need to be fixed. It's pretty seldom, what happens is, people like to go cut fiber because they think it's copper, and they, and they steal the copper so they can make money. And when they cut into that glass and a, a, a fiber network, like across the street here on the pole that's wrapped around some of the old aluminum net, network there, that has about a hundred and eighty to two hundred pieces of hair in there, hair-like, uh, uh, glass fibers. And when you cut a hundred and eighty count fiber, you literally have to splice each one back together again like a piece of hair. And the piece of equipment is seventy-five thousand dollars, and it takes a while. So, the fiber network cuts and the fiber network damage is much rarer than the equipment failure. So, I would say it could even be higher than seventy percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What I can do for you is, we, we have Lisa Nalutavici, my director, here. She's on the DL for when these things go down. And when she sees it go down, she is instructed to pick up the phone and talk to the area VP. Now, this person happens to be out of Denver, and make sure that he knows that we have a serious concern politically with our friends in Rippen, and we need it, we need fast action. Okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, I, I wish I had enough bandwidth to do it. I have, I do business in three hundred communities in California. There's not three hundred of me, unfortunately, although I have multiple personnel, that's a whole other discussion. Okay. What else can I do for you, gentlemen, ladies?
No, we appreciate you coming out and explaining what the situation was because it's, uh, something we all get asked about. And we're trying to do our job by finding out what the issues are and what we can do to, to help. And you're talking about expediting, you know, permitting processes. I think we, well, I don't wanna speak for staff, but...
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, the fact that you showed up here is the biggest thing.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. You put shivers down my back, sir. You don't know me. I've been in the business for forty years, and I've done everything. I've been a general manager for multiple states. I run government affairs in, in ten states at one time. I'm, I'm getting close to retirement, so I'm trying to slow down a little bit. Uh, and, uh, Mayor, you made it very clear. This is important. And then that's when I think, I, within thirty seconds, that I'm there. Okay? Um, we need to do more of this, but we, we're a little stretched. Okay? Uh, we're wrapping up, um, the Time Warner acquisition, getting all of those things fixed. And now my team can focus more back on the day-to-day care of our cities and counties. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have my, my cellphone number on the card.
Tricia will call you if we have issues going forward.
The only time my wife makes me turn it off is when I go to church on Sundays. She doesn't want the priest to yell at me at Mass, okay? And as you know, happy wife, happy life. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And as far as that credit you wanted to bring up and ask, you can just get back to Tricia or somebody about that, whether or not... You were gonna go check and ask with the company about crediting back people that they know, that you know the system was down regardless of whose modem it was?
I will.
Okay. That's, that's fine. I just think the fact that you're addressing it, we appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm glad he came. I'll ask Tricia. Okay, Surface Water Supply Project Grant Status. authorized staff to continue efforts in securing a grant for the SSGID Surface Water Supply Project. Who's that?
That's me.
Okay.
I have a few, a little overview I wanna give to you before you ask your questions. Um, just a quick overview of the project in general. Uh, Rippen is solely dependent on groundwater, and having a surface water supply would be a great benefit tor, to us. So, there's two steps, um, to get a constant source of surface water. And the first is to create a pipeline connecting us to SSGID's potable water. And the second would be to... And the second would be to expand the SSJID treatment plant. Uh, this project is for the first step, which is to create a pipeline. After we create a pipeline, we'd be able to utilize water in the winter months. Um, and that's when the treatment plant is not operating at capacity. Uh, it's a win for us because we're able to get some surface water. And it's a win for SSJID because they'll be operating at capacity year-round. And it's a win for other cities because, um, it would decrease their operating expenses on those winter months when we're, um, paying into it. Installing a pipeline would give us future potential to expand the treatment plant and to get water every month of the year. So, uh, we, to look into funding this eight, six-point-eight-million-dollar project, we've hired consultants to search for grants for us and Provost and Pritchard. And we found only one viable grant submitted application. The grant's, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And after we take into account the investments that we would have to make to obtain the grant, we'd probably have about nine percent of the overall cost of the project. Uh, staff would like direction from council, um, if this grant is worth pursuing. And what this means is, if we obtain the grant, we will be on a tight schedule with a three-year timeline to complete the project, which means we'd have to commit to the remainder of the funding roughly six million dollars by increasing utility rates to pay off the bonds. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, we evaluated how rates would have to increase to obtain funds within a five-year timeframe and found that rates would have to increase roughly twenty-five percent each year for five years to pay off the amount of, um, the six million dollars within five years. Any questions?
Comments?
Well, I have one, and I'll probably stretch into more than one. I'm having a hard time justifying spending a hundred thousand dollars to get seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that if we don't spend in three years, we have to send it back. And we've still spent the hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that, and that's what we want, and it's not guaranteed on top of that, this is a grant.
And it represents maybe ten percent of the actual cost of the project. And to get the other ninety percent, we have to more than double the water rates for this community. I'm not sure I'm ready for that, in all honesty.
The, the other thing I would just mention is, a couple of years ago, we started to, um, track and obviously collect money for the Surface Water Project through our AB sixteen-hundred fee. So, that's happening now, too. Um, I'm, still obviously in its infancy, but that's gonna grow over time as well. And, you know, maybe as that pot grows, something to consider is, once that grows, now you go out and leverage that money for some grant money to, to make up the difference at the end, um, of the funding, um, cycle.
Currently, this grant comes out every year, you know, at least, it's, it's a drought resiliency program grant. So, um, you know, we could always have the chance for the following year or the year after.
But are we into it for sixty grand already? Is that what that report says?
We've currently spent about forty thousand, um, on the urban water management plan, which is still a benefit to have that plan. And then about, uh, that was thirty thousand, and then about ten thousand or so on Provost and Pritchard, um, just researching grant opportunities for us.
Which is sixty thousand dollars.
Forty so far.
But you said, oh, the thirty and the ten are the forty, not in addition to the four, oh, okay.
But that would probably have to be updated if we go next year, the year after, year after, correct?
No, so that...
So, that thirty thousand bucks, the one-time thing, it lasts forever?
So, that, the, there was thirty thousand for the urban water management plan, ten thousand that we've already paid Provost and Pritchard for their services to date. Uh, the sixty thousand would be forty thousand for the feasibility study, and then, uh, ten thousand for, uh, Provost and Pritchard additional services. And then another ten thousand or so for additional environmental, that having a grant would force us to do additional environmental as opposed to not having a grant.
Right, but the forty thousand we've spent so far, whatever document we have, is still a good document next year, the year a- okay.
For five years.
Yeah, yeah, five years, okay, so we don't lose it if we wait and defer to next year.
Correct, we've already paid for it, yeah, we've already...
Well, my inclination right now is just get out while we're ahead.
I agree.
And that doesn't mean we quit looking, but if something more viable or feasible comes up, I'm ready to go into it. But this just seems like it's...
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring it to you before we kept spending more money, is to see what, what you wanted to do.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like the direction then is not to pursue it? Is that good enough for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Uh, 4C, Process to Establish Park Rules. Recreation Director Mr. Kai Stevens is requesting direction from the City Council regarding the process to establish park rules related to jump houses and golf in city parks. You can golf in city parks right now?
Uh, no. We've had a number of rules in, in place, and, and we've recently replaced several park signs and noticed that we didn't have corresponding ordinance in place for two of the, of the park rules. And so, we're bringing that forward to try to bring consistency throughout. Um, but also wanted to give you guys an alternative in case, uh, you wanted to not go the ordinance route. But every other, uh, current rule in place does have a, a corresponding ordinance. So, we wanted to, uh, get input from the council on if they wanted to continue in that way to be consistent across the board.
Well, I have to be honest, after I read that, I'm not sure what we're being asked. Because part of me's... My perception was, we were being asked whether we wanted to set up two tracks on how to control behavior in the parks. One would be that, that the ordinance we have already, I'm assuming, would stay in place. And rather than adopt any more ordinances, we would set up this other process, I'm not sure what it is, to set other rules. So, now, depending on which rule we're talking about, we might have to revise an ordinance, or we might just have to change it. Do I have it right?
Essentially, I think you do, but... Basically, what we're trying to do is say, well, when we, when we have new rules like bounce houses or golf or whatever...
Do we wanna have a simplified process whereby, uh, we can do this by resolution in the future, and we can do it by resolution of the Recreation Commission? Does the council want to delegate some of the more specific rules to the Recreation Commission and let them do this by way of resolution, rather than going through the ordinance process with publication and first reading and second reading and adoption and thirty days and all of that? As we look at the, you have two ordinances, one that has rules for all city parks, and then you have a second ordinance that has, a second chapter that has specific rules for specific parks. And so, the thought process was, maybe we would have that set, that latter chapter be amended to say that the Recreation Commission can adopt specific rules for specific parks and not have to have this come to the council every time. Or... Or we can come back...
It could come to the council as a resolution and not have to wait three months to do it, you could do it in one night.
Correct, but if we wanna do that, we would have to amend the ordinance now to provide for that procedure to be put in place. That's a more simplified procedure to be put in place.
I'm getting close to, to understanding.
Perfect.
Then my next question is, if we're gonna revise the ordinance to put that process in place, can we revise the ordinance so that all the existing rules get moved over there, too? So, we still have one process?
Yep. That's exactly right. That way, we, because as we've looked at it, it's grown, right? The specific rules for specific parks have kinda grown over the years. And after a while, you kinda go, man, you know, is this, is this something we wanna continue this process? Or do we wanna make it simpler by, by basically taking all of those ordinance rules and may, putting them into a resolution format and simply providing for that in, in, in a one-time ordinance amendment to, to, to establish that simplified process?
You wanna make it simplified.
Yep, I, I have no problem with that.
And then, and then, you know, we'll, we'll bring it back with, with that and then have it come to the council. Uh, maybe the Recreation Commission makes a recommendation or something like that, depending on, you know, let, let's let them sort of vet those issues and then let it come to the council for, uh, resolution.
Well, I could see that it might work, sort of along the same lines as Planning Commission.
Exactly.
That the parts of building and land and stuff that are ours, it goes to them first, they get it all talked out, Kai and them work out how that, what they wanna, and then it comes to us, and it's, it's a whole lot easier than raising fourteen questions that goes back for another month and do it again.
Yep.
Right, 'cause I remember, I mean, many years ago, I remember putting together a draft ordinance to deal with arcades. And I'll tell you how long that was, right? You put your quarter in, you played Pac-Man. There, there was a concern in town about having too many kids in these arcade parlors, and they wanted a set of, council wanted a set of rules.
I think I remember.
One of them was Jake, I remember.
It probably was. But, um, but as we look back at it...
I remember that.
Please, Mr. Councilman, pass it.
But as we look back on it now, we say, man, why have we spent a lot of time regulating something that was a, was a, had its moment and then it was gone?
Yeah, exactly.
Bounce houses may be the same thing, and we had to amend an ordinance, and so, anyway, I think you understand, and we're trying to establish a better process.
Yep, yep.
So, we'll work on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Well, and I have a couple of comments based, and I sent them to Kevin. One, it says no golfing. What the heck is that?
Yeah.
Does that mean you can't swing a golf club? Does that mean you can't play around? There needs to be a little bit more in there than just no golfing.
Is that a frisbee golf?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. The other one is, in that ordinance, in one place, it says that you can't, that bounce houses and jumping houses are okay. You go down a little farther, and it says, nope, can't have bound, bounce houses. So, we, we need to make, make sure everything is...
Well, I think that's, that's...
I don't know the difference between a jump house and a bounce house myself. But the, the fact that one place it says they're okay and another place says it's not.
Because you guys didn't read the thing thoroughly and check it out. What, what is the difference, Kai?
I'll, I'll try to clarify, and we'll certainly clean all this up, uh, before it comes back to you. Jump houses and bounce houses, same thing, you know? So, it, it just depends on who talks.
That makes it worse.
So, we're, we're gonna take one of those out and just go with one. The number two that you, you're talking about is the water, uh, jump houses, not in general. And thirdly, we're going along the lines that the chief went with his barbecues, that you need, they need to be corresponding with a rental so that we know who's having it out there. We have insurance on file, we have a deposit on file, because there has been damage that has occurred over the last couple of years. 'Cause they just show up, we don't know who, who's showing up, who's doing what. So, the, the bounce houses will be limited with a permit corresponding with a rental. And, and then, but the water ones will not be allowed.
What's a water one?
That's a water slide.
Water slides and stuff.
If they're gonna have a bounce house at one of our parks, if they're written in parks, one thing, but they, they...
Sort of.
You're just gonna make it where they gotta explain that they're gonna have a bounce house.
Yes, they need special permission in conjunction with the facility or park rental, just like, you know, we kinda did with... Yes, they'll have insurance on file, we'll have their name, their phone number, deposit.
Yeah, so when somebody gets hurt...
Exactly, or they do damage to our property.
Exactly.
You know, Ted's on top of that one. Better put Ted on the committee.
Just give him a taser.
Yeah, that's right.
Any else, any else?
Nope.
Okay, so, you got the direction, okay. Mobile food vendor discussion, City Council provides staff, with staff with direction on how to proceed with amendments to the Ripon Municipal Code, if any, regarding mobile food vendors within the City of Ripon. Who's got that?
Uh, unfortunately, I got the short straw on this one. So, I'm gonna tee this one up, and then you guys can ask.
You're gonna tee it up in one?
No golf.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not in a park, though, so I think it's all right. So, um, at the July council meeting, as you know, uh, the council directed staff to kinda research some possible amendments to our, our current ordinance. And if you look at our current ordinance, it's under parking, standing, and stopping. It's kind of really in an odd spot in our municipal code. So, at a minimum, I think we need to just actually kind of make its own ordinance dealing with some of this and clarify it. Um, but we did go through and kind of, um, hopefully it was clear, but I, I don't think it was as clear as I thought it was.
Are you talking about Table one point one?
Yes, so...
Thing is clear as mud.
There's mud, that's good, that's kinda how the way the ordinance is written.
It's not that clear.
So, I'll, I'll step through that table, just to kinda point out, um, how we currently handle food trucks or mobile food vendors, for that matter. They don't necessarily have to be a truck, it could be a trailer or even pop-up stands that, that, that we see at, like, Amma Blossom and such. So, Table one kinda tries to break them up into the categories. So, uh, the first column there, the current food truck regulations, there's, there's really three different type of food vendors that we talk about in each of the categories. Um, and then the categories are in the rows, on the sides, the permit requirements, location restrictions and such. So, currently, uh, we, we allow for, well, I'm gonna kinda classify as three different type of mobile vendors, uh, in, in town. And the first one is mobile vendors that don't stop more than ten minutes at any given space. So, a good example of those is, um, subdivision going on right now, uh, the vineyards out there. You'll, you'll see a, a brake truck roll through the site, they honk their horn, and the guys come out and get what they want off the brake food truck or the food truck at that time. And they don't stop in one spot, they'll, they'll kinda go house to house and hit all the workers out there, and they, they traverse through the city, and they don't set up shop, per se, on city streets, they're just kinda moving. Ice cream trucks fall under the same category. Apparently, there's some mobile food vendors pedaling around on a bicycle these days, selling ice creams and such, too, would fall into that same category. That's the first type, that's the first kinda category we put them in. Secondly, is the ones we allow now, uh, through special events. Um, you see those at Amma Blossom, um, Main Street Days. Usually, they're booths that are set up, but they could be a food truck or a trailer. Um, Farmer's Market here in town had some, uh, food vendors at the Farmer's Market, that was through special events. And then there's a last one, it's kind of unregulated, there's really nothing in our code about it, we just haven't dealt with them too much, is these, kind of these nonprofit groups that invite them to show up for a small period of time. Cupcake Lady, um, Taco Truck Rita's Shaved Ice has shown up to, like, um, football practice after, um, a football practice here with the youth football programs.
They'll have them come in for open house and stuff, too.
Invite them in, it's not like they just show up, but they'll invite them in for an evening, and they'll be there for a two- or three-hour period on private property typically, and they'll, they'll leave after that night and not come back really unless they're invited back. So, we really have nothing in our code for that, but we haven't ever really tried to touch that one yet. Um, you know, 'cause you get into, um, at the football stadiums here in town, a lot of times, there'll be food vendors inside, which is fine, you have to pay to get in really to the football game to, and, and they're inside there, but what if they decided to set up outside? I mean, so we just, that has not been dealt with at all in our, our code, but we just kinda, kind of a hands-off approach at this point with those. So, the permit requirements for each one of those, like the, the current ordinance, um, basically, the trucks that are rolling through the sites and stop, not stopping more than ten minutes, they, they're supposed to have a current city business license, um, that, when they're selling something in town. Just like any other vendor that would come in town, if a guy was coming to put an air conditioner on your house, um, he would have to get a business license within the City of Ripon to do, uh, business in Ripon. So, these guys are supposed to have business licenses. I don't know, I didn't go through a check to see how many have pulled those, we really didn't follow up on that side of it, but, um, I would imagine, if you probably stopped a few of those people, you're not gonna find that they have business licenses. Something that's not really tracked too well. Um, special events permits the same way, they, they actually are covered by the vendor permit for the event sponsor. Um, but I would imagine, uh, these people selling food at these events should also have a City of Ripon business license, as well as these mobile food trucks that roll into town that are at these nonprofit events that, that kinda park and are invited, invited at certain times. Um, so the next category there is locations.
I have a question on this part. How is it different if a vent, a merchant downtown on private property has an event that has a food truck and a school that is technically, it's par, private property as far as the city is concerned, has an event that involves a food truck? As I read what's in here, the merchant has to have a special event permit. The school doesn't.
Right, um, and that's one kinda gaping hole in our current ordinance or the way it's been dealt with. Um, that's something that at least needs to be plugged or fixed in this, a revised version of this however which way the council decides they wanna go. Um, location restrictions, obviously, the mobile food vendors, they're allowed in any zoning district with... Um, location restrictions, obviously the mobile food vendors, they're allowed in any zoning district within the city of Ripon. Like I said, they'll roll through residential sites when they're building out there. Um, you could see them probably coming in over to the industrial area, gunner, steel and stuff like that during break times. The special events permit locations, uh, wherever the special event's being held, they're obviously allowed. We have Main Street Day, so it's in downtown there. Um, Missland Sports Park handles like the Amma Blossom Festival. Uh, Farmer's Market, uh, they did a special events permit there at Studio Joy, which was the old Chamber location. Uh, that was a special events permit that was done at the city. And then the last one, like I said, the unregulated kind of, they're just at locations where these nonprofits hap- happen. I mean, um, you've got Babe Ruth that has a food trailer that sells to typically the fans that are there, but it was pointed out during this last summer, they are actually advertising on Facebook that they're open. So I don't, if they're just there for the people watching the games, I don't know why they're advertising, um, kind of marketing out to the general public. Uh, time limits, the, like I said, the, the current, the mobile ones that can't stop for more than ten minutes, obviously that's something that's just kind of tracked or watched as they roll through town. If they're parked in any location for any given time, we usually, uh, get a phone call on some of those we have in the past when they, they've parked on, uh, dirt lots out here off of Jackton Road and such. Um, the special events permit, it's usually just going on, obviously going on during the time of that. And then, uh, the unregulated ones for the nonprofits, it's, it's kind of whenever their, their events are going on, like games or, or, um, practices and such like that.
Um, okay, now I have another question.
Go ahead.
If a merchant or a business wanted to have a food truck come in to serve lunch, can't get it done in ten minutes. Do they have to have a, where's that fit? Are they unregulated?
That doesn't, that really doesn't fit in our code at this point.
Okay.
It doesn't.
They have to move one parking spot every ten.
Every ten minutes.
Back in, back down, yeah, but keep the motor running. And then sales tax, they're all kind of handled the same with sales tax. Um, the, the correct answer is yeah, we're supposed to be getting sales tax from these. Um, but as you'll see in this next section of the staff report, um, they actually have to, uh, sales tax is collected by the state of California with these type of vendors. Um, they're supposed to be keeping track of, okay, we, we're in Ripon now, we're collecting tax according to the rate in Ripon and we sold this much money in Ripon. And then they go to Modesto and they do the sort of same thing. They're supposed to report all that to the state and the state's supposed to be able to divvy that up. After looking through our tax, what we received for taxes, I, I don't necessarily know. We get a whole lot out of that, so it's not a money-making thing for the city from a tax revenue standpoint if these things come in. Um, and I don't quite honestly think the state cares if they track it that close. Um, the state's getting their money out of it and does it, as it trickles down to us, I don't necessarily know they're watching it that closely. Um, the other thing too, some other requirements, the, the following licenses and permits are required of mobile food vendors. These are just something that we, during our research have found. They're supposed to have a tax identification number, business license, depending on, obviously depending on the jurisdictions, uh, some jurisdictions might not require it, but most of them do. Uh, vehicle license for, for whatever food truck they have. They have to have a separate health permit for each county they operate in. All the people on the food truck have to have a food handler permit, so they have to be permitted as a food handler. And, um, and under California law, each food facility must have at least one employee or owner who has passed a state-approved foods, food safety certification exam. Um, so that's the requirements from state of California for mobile food vendors. Um, so I think, you know, staff is kind of, it, we are supportive leaving obviously the, um, ordinance that we have, like keeping some of those in place. I mean, I think they've worked well for our community and, and they do need some clarification, obviously. But having them at special events, I think has worked fine. Um, the ones rolling through job sites, I think worked fine. However, we would have to try to define some of these other ones that we really haven't touched at all over the time period, like the ones at these, like the nonprofit events where they have them show up. So moving forward, trying to figure out how council wants to proceed and what we can come back with as far as if you want to do any further amendments.
Probably something that doesn't take an attorney to figure out how, what, what the process is. I'd have to hire an attorney to walk through this.
Well, we've got one here.
I'd go into another business.
Um.
Tom likes it.
It is, it is quite interesting reading through a lot of the research, talking about mobile food vendors about, they have seminars that, uh, companies are putting on for these mobile food vendors because of the tax, just the tax laws that these guys have to follow moving town to town. Um, I said a couple of things that the council can consider. Obviously you could, uh, we think, we need to create a new ordinance to clarify some of these that we currently have now that just needs some clarification. I think having them being permitted, uh, having mobile food vendors being permitted as a, uh, under a special events is something that we would want to continue to do. We probably just need to define that a little bit better. And that would be a good start, I think. You could obviously allow mobile food, like a mobile food vendor night. Um, several communities have done that where they've done maybe once a month or twice a month. I don't know what that number is, but you could define an event, maybe a certain period of the year. I mean, you probably wouldn't want to have it during the winter months, but where they have an area where they set up and, and the community can come out and, and enjoy.
Sacramento has one of those. I think they.
A night like that.
Twice a month. They have a park.
Do they really?
Yeah, they have a park where they.
Kind of like a Farmer's Market, but a mobile food truck, but by any food trucks, it's kind of like something they.
Food truck, all it is is food trucks.
Um, additionally, you could probably do is allow, we did hear some, um, possible interest in allowing some of these to operate at Missland Sports Park. I mean, there's a lot of events that go on out there. Um, and so operating them out there would, that would probably take a little bit of resources from the city, obviously, to try to set up an area for that. Um, I'm not sure we would actually recoup our costs back for setting up an area like that. If you, I think it would be nice if it had a paved area with a cover and stuff like that and some tables for people to sit on there. But I mean, who's, who's footing the bill for that, obviously? And what you charge them to be there, it would take quite a bit of time probably to recoup that kind of money back. And then lastly, which, uh, I don't think that's any of staff's recommendations at this point though, is to allow mobile food vendors to operate within city limits. It's kind of wide open where you go to other communities and see them parked here and there, any time of day, any time of night. Um, so those are some of the options that you guys, uh, could consider. I mean, we could obviously try to start bookending what the council wants to do with this. Um, like I said, I think it would be our recommendation to possibly start off a little bit slower and then see how things go. And if there's some interest in opening it up even further, we can always revisit the ordinance. And there, and there's a lot of information in here too that I included in the staff report that if we do, uh, try to blow this thing wide open, I think there's a lot of things we would need to consider and look further into. Including if we're gonna just open it wide up is, is to possibly, um, see what the business community in this town feels like as well.
Yeah, I don't think the business community's all up excited is what it's, that kind of sounded like about us having that. So to me, I think you said we need to revisit it anyway to make it clear. I'm for that. I don't think it should cost us any, any time about recouping costs. I, I don't think it should cost the city anything when a, when another business moves in. We're not subsidizing that and cleaning it up. Other than that, I don't, write it up.
Yeah.
I don't have a whole lot to say other than I had a hard time following the whole thing.
It's, it's hard to understand, uh, it's a little bit convoluted there, but, um, one thing I think I draw from what we do have currently is most of the, chances for someone to come right now in the times where they would be serving people, it's not something that would probably be taking much business away from, uh, brick and mortar. Where if you start allowing them to be more of an, you know, wider range of options, like if they're pulling up to a construction site, those guys probably aren't gonna go to Canal Street for lunch. More than likely they're even bringing their lunch, they're just grabbing a snack. If they're at a sporting event where the kids are walking out, grabbing a shaved ice afterwards, that's not taking business away from someone. So that, that generally across here, I feel like it's not something that is probably affecting the businesses at all. And that's one of the things I think is important to me moving forwards is if it's gonna have a negative impact on existing businesses, it's not worth doing it to me. And if it's gonna have a negative impact on the city, then it's not worth, you know, if it's gonna cost us money to make it happen, it doesn't make any sense. So that, uh, I, I guess the other question I have, is it possible to create like a sort of subcommittee or something to, to work on it? Or one of us and some city staff to work on it? Is that a possibility if they want to look at it?
You volunteering?
I say you do whatever you want to do.
I just wonder, you know, is that worth, you know, looking at options that way so we can move forward a little faster on it or get, get?
Well, pers- personally, I'm not necessarily in a rush. I think based on that discussion that we had, what was it, July?
Yeah.
When the top, uh, that other, the people that operate one were here.
Yeah.
I think, A, I'd like to see what some other towns do, and I'm not talking about San Francisco and Tracy. I'm talking about places like Escalon or Riverbank.
The nicer cities.
Yeah, cities like us, to see what, what they allow and don't allow. I think the, the four points that you put there are an outline. I'm not at this point ready to say that we should open the gate, floodgates and say, you know, it's the wild, wild west as far as food trucks are concerned.
No.
Uh, the things that I've heard that people are interested in is Missland Sports Park, special events. There are some merchants who I, I get the sense what they're looking at is the possibility of having a food truck somewhere in the area on a day during lunch.
Yep.
As an attraction and as a, as something to serve their employees. Not every day, you know, but just once in a while. I'd like to, to see us look at that. And the other thing is the consistency of it. How do we handle, it's the same question I asked before. Do we handle a food truck that's gonna be here for a football game the same way that we handle a food truck that's going to be here for the Farmer's Market downtown? They're both on private property, they're both special events. Why does one get to be here whether they, we want them or not and the other one is regulated to death? I'd at least like to, I think we need to look at that for a consistencies purpose.
We could certainly look into some of that. I, I think you're going, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to look at other, we looked at a lot of communities and quite honestly, it's all over the board. So you're not gonna look at different communities. You know, there are several that do have a food truck night, but that same, those same types.
Well, I'd like to see that looked at too, cause I mean, those kinds of things, in my mind, that's not much different than having a Christmas light parade or some of the other things that we tend to feel like we can deal with once in a while. As long as we think about it ahead of time, I'd like to see it and we can always say, that was a ridiculous thing and, and send it away.
Well, and I think even your current ordinance that you have in place allows for that.
Okay.
Even now. I mean, it's, it's like, it's like a special events permit.
So it'd be a special event if somebody set up, okay.
So, I mean, that just takes some clarification in our, our ordinance, but, uh, you have some communities that do that and they, and the community seems to enjoy that, but some of those same communities also allow them in different areas.
The other thing I've had people ask me about, and this is in residential, where they've said, what if a neighborhood wanted to have a food truck?
Fourth of July?
On a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Yeah, Fourth of July is one that's brought up and those kinds of things. Could we do it? I don't know.
Currently would be allowed under the city block party program. So they could apply to that with the police department. There's no fee. They just have to register. That, that's an opportunity for that type of event to occur.
They do need to register, cause I've had them in my neighborhood where the kids have birthday parties, they're being these big old trucks with shaved ice and all kinds of stuff and they park in the driveways and we all go over there and have some.
That, that, they have to register a, as a block party if they're gonna shut down the street and that type of thing.
Oh, they didn't shut down. They park in the driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But see, that's the whole thing is, I park it in the driveway, I'm treated one way. If I want to block this cul-de-sac and put one out on, in the middle so that everybody, I'm treated differently. Do we want that? Or do we want to somehow at least look at whether that can all be melded into one sort of a, because the simpler it is, it's the easier it is to communicate to the community what you have to do in order to have your party.
Otherwise it's.
Otherwise you can't figure it out.
Yeah, you can't figure it out, so you just say the hell with it, I'm gonna go do it.
I just go do it, sort of like the bounce houses.
My neighborhood does.
You can regulate it to death to where nobody's gonna wanna do it.
Yeah. No, the opposite's what they'll do.
They just do it.
They just do it, yeah.
Well, yeah, that too. So, but no, but I, I, I think the nice thing about it, with the time of year we're handling this, is I think we've got a little bit of time. It's the tail end of summer. You figure more than likely that when this program is gonna want to come into effect is, you know, beginning of spring.
People may want to have trucks with hot chocolate there in the wintertime.
Well, that could be.
Sounds good, man. Well, my whole thing is I want to take it slow and talk about it and get it right. Rather than we rush into something and for the next six months, every month, the chief or some, or Kai or somebody's coming saying, you know, we had this problem and we gotta fix it. You know, we had this problem, we gotta fix it. I'd rather see if we can't get some of those cut off at the beginning.
Yeah, we took our time on the.
Come back next summer.
They did go anyway.
Well, but it's not because we can't, they can't do it.
So let me, let us get back to you with some ideas on this. Uh, I think what I am hearing is there's not a huge desire to, to, um, pull down at the bottom of the overpass and that Leo's Auto Repair see a taco truck sitting there every day.
I didn't think of that one.
And then certainly, I, I think, I, I don't know if we would support a whole lot unless with the, uh, special events permit in, in the downtown district. It's just difficult too because, um, I mean, I, I don't think you want to start allowing them in city parking lots or property down there and.
City parking lots are full. The only place you'd be able to go is over where the recycling is. I mean, it's busy downtown.
We'll talk to Mike Garcia and put him out there in his property.
Well, yeah. So, I mean.
Then it's private property. See, that's what I'm saying. We gotta.
Right. So I, I think we don't necessarily want to go that route with it at this point, but, um, okay. Let me see what I can get back to you guys with.
I have full faith and confidence in you, Mr. Mayor.
And make it simple.
I get my magic eight ball out.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Is that it? Anything else? Okay. We'll go to reports. Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council. I just wanted to give a, a brief update. I know last, uh, month we talked about, uh, um, targeted traffic enforcement and so forth. Uh, just an update, um, as of this morning, uh, we're on track to actually surpass last year's, um, amount of speeding citations and stop sign violations. And, uh, our other main violation that we cite for is failing to obey signs or signals. Usually those are, um, no U-turn signs that occur at, are in various intersections. Um, we continue to get, uh, traffic complaints, uh, are typically our most, um, frequent complaints within the city. And so I just wanted to give a quick update on that. Uh, I know, um, there was some concern about the, uh, traffic coming in on West Ripon Road uh, during peak, peak, uh, travel times, uh, usually in the mornings and the afternoons. Um, we've kind of seen that being in flux. Some days are worse than others. Yesterday was a bad day. Um, but there were some unique circumstances that occurred, uh, that created this, uh, that situation. But typically the officers that are, uh, out working on those, uh, at those dates and times, uh, seeing that it's kind of sporadic, that it's, uh, um, uh, hard to predict depending on what's occurring on the freeways. Uh, but they are, um, out there doing those targeted enforcement actions and again, uh, with speed, stop signs and, uh, failing to obey signs and signals is our top three, uh, violations that we're citing for. And then just one other thing, just, uh, year-to-date on our part one crimes, uh, we are down twenty-three percent year-to-date. And that is a huge, uh, uh, part of a reduction in larcenies, uh, which also include shoplifting type cases. So, um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Ted.
Yes, a couple items. Uh, wanted to report on our water usage for, um, August of last month. We were at sixteen point seven percent from the two thousand thirteen base year for, uh, before the drought started. Um, it brings our, uh, twelve-month running average to twenty-three point four percent. Um, our groundwater, uh, we're continuing to monitor it. Uh, we are at, uh, our average is at thirty-eight feet. It's actually gone down just about a foot over probably about the last, uh, over the last year. We're just eight months into the, the year. We still have four months that we're, we're looking at averages. So we feel that that may come up a bit and probably be just about the same. So it'll probably be, uh, just, uh, the same amount, uh, or the same, same water level depth.
How do you weld with that thing?
Um, this is, we're monitoring. This is, we're monitoring seven wells um for this data. Um and then um last week, we uh, we've had the opportunity to fill our open water conservation coordinator position. Charlie's out uh actively patrolling and identifying violators and uh leaving water notices, or excuse me, courtesy notices for violators. And we're gonna be um spend, spending some time uh focused on that.
Is he going out at different times of day and night?
He's going out uh in the mornings and sometimes in the evenings, it's not in the middle of the night at it, but we're looking.
When's he in Spring Creek?
So that's, that's all I had.
Thanks, Ted. Kai, anything else? Nothing? 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 Oh, really? Counsel.
Nice to be back.
Keep it going.
Nothing?
Nothing, nothing to report?
Yeah.
Just to get turned around by the fire.
Oh, is that right?
On, on uh Chastity County there, yeah.
Oh, coming back from.
Made a fifteen-hour trip and a twenty-hour trip. Lots of fun.
Yeah.
It's good to be back.
Well, we're glad to see you back. You don't know how happy we are.
Very good.
Kevin?
He has nothing.
I handed out the uh updated schedule for all the different projects, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we've already talked about it a couple.
Jake said you don't have any.
Are any of them long farther off than they were before? So you don't tell us what it was before, you just say it's updated and leave it to us to figure it out.
I, I don't think so, I, I think uh the significant work that's happened is uh River Road, we did get authorization to proceed. I mentioned that earlier, so that, that was a substantial milestone that we've achieved. And then with the cameras, I, I think a number of the cameras have come in, um so we're going through, beginning the installation process. And then Dan is getting close to uh finalizing the purchase order for the license plate readers, so. Um and then the compactor's operating.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about it.
Okay.
That thing is packed. Now, I'm wondering how we had all that cardboard. Okay, I'm sorry.
You're stealing his stuff.
I'm sorry, she's silly, stop. Is that it?
That's it.
I guess you can.
Go ahead, Dan, uh Daniel, make your, make your. No, he still wants to say it. Go ahead, Dan.
I have something more important to say, thank you.
Then thank you?
Baby number two.
I'm sure they're gonna appreciate that.
They will.
My prediction is baby number two.
No.
No.
No, not that, not that exciting. Um I would just say that uh, you know, in uh remembrance of the September eleventh seventeen years ago, just uh, take an opportunity to say thank you to chief and uh all of our police and uh to just all the first responders um who sacrificed each and every day for us. Um and thank you to the members of the public who are here tonight to listen to this. Nothing to report?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing. Vice mayor, yeah, so you have something to report.
Yes. I've seen Dan Brandon in a lift truck thirty feet off the ground doing his job.
Wow.
He was shaking, but he was up there doing his job.
How is this the hydraulics?
No, this, the new compactor at the recycling center is running and doing a really good job. The people that work there love it, because it's, it's easier to work with, it's easier for them to uh keep people under control. We don't have people jumping on top of cardboard and getting trapped in there and calling the fire department. The other piece of good news is the volume of cardboard that that thing can handle. Uh before, we were happy if we sent three, three and a half tons to the recycler. Now it's five.
It crushes that much more.
It puts that much more into that bin, that thing is a monster, it's, it's unbelievable. And uh it's gonna do, do a lot of good for us, and it's, the only thing I would say is we gotta do something about all that dirt and gravel in front of the cardboard area, cause it really makes it hard to clean up. Other than that, they're loving it. And uh. Bring it on.
You know, Tom, I went out to the other day and that whole thing was already full.
Yeah.
All the way from one end all the way down to the.
They emptied it on Friday and by Monday you don't even know that they did it. It's, it's amazing how much is going, and you know, every, people will say, well, yeah, we're getting it from out of town and we're getting it to, no. It's just people like you and me who drive up with a RV full of cardboard or a pickup truck full of cardboard and throwing it in there every week. Yeah, it's just amazing.
I'm there twice a week.
Seven thousand people bringing all their cardboard.
What's Mona buying?
Huh?
What is Mona buying?
Oh, gosh, who the hell knows? Whatever she wants.
That's all I have.
Wait, thank you, no, that's good. And I have nothing. Anything else?
Hammer die.
Nothing? Ending adjournment.